We'll call the regular commission meeting, Upshur County Commission meeting to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. Amen. Let me get better on the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the minutes of October 25th, 2012, Upshur County Commission meeting, and Jackie is gonna read those for us.
The county commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, October 25, 2012, at 9:00 a.m. Donnie Tanny called the meeting to order. There were present Donnie Tanny Commissioner, Creed Pletcher Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, William Parker County Administrator, Megan Palmeri Assistant County Administrator, and Jacqueline Dinklocker Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the commission approved the regular meeting minutes of October 18, 2012 as submitted. Joyce Harris Thacker, Upshur County Family Resource Network Director, appeared before the commission and presented a request that the commission provide payroll services for a temporary part-time substance abuse prevention grant part-time employee. Ms. Harris Thacker provided an update/ status report on activities and services that the grant provides and the duties of the proposed employee. After discussion on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved Ms. Harris Thacker's request. Patty Adams, Pancreatic Cancer Action Network Representative, presented the Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month proclamation. The purpose of the proclamation is to bring increased awareness of the incidence of pancreatic cancer as the fourth leading cause of cancer deaths in America with a goal of increased funding for research, patient services, and public awareness and education related to developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic cancer. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the commission approved and authorized the commission to sign the proclamation. William Parker provided a review of the West Virginia Records Management and Preservation Board Grant Guidelines and application for fiscal year 2013-14. The grant application in the amount of $14,438 is for the benefit of the Office of the Upshur County Circuit Clerk for the purchase of a heavy-duty crosscut shredder and for the continuation of scanning and indexing of chancery and law case files Phase II, for the conversion of digital files. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the grant application and related documents. Agenda item number two, the approval of Upshur County Financial Statement for fiscal year ended June 2012, was not ready for action at this time and will be placed on a future agenda. After discussion on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the employment of temporary part-time early-voting clerks Beatrice Adams, Irene Andrew, Nelda Light, Hannah Wentz, Judith Miles, Catherine Fry, Beulah Riffle, Margaret Neely, Philip Murphy, Betty Hevenner, James Vance, Catherine Vance, and Janet K. Wilson. Effective date of employment is October 24, 2012 through November 3, 2012 at the rate of $7.25 per hour. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the authorization of ACH withdrawals for retirement and other contributions for Public Employees Retirement System and Deputy Sheriff Retirement Fund. After discussion on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the grant contract and related documents with the West Virginia Development Authority for the Governor's Community Participation Grant in the amount of $4,000 for the benefit of the Warren District Volunteer Fire Department. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the commission approved the resignation of Jamie Queen as worthless check clerk for the magistrate clerk office effective October 18, 2012. Action on the employment of the animal control was deferred till later in this meeting. After discussion on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved a two-year moratorium for changes to the current road and/or street names effective October 25, 2012 through January 1, 2015. The moratorium will reduce confusion for emergency and postal services in facilitating the implementation of changes to the addressing and mapping system which have recently taken place or will be going into effect within the next few months. William Parker provided an update on projects at the James Currie Library Park. Rick Edwards appeared before the commission and provided an update/ status report on the Upshur County Wellness Complex. Mr. Edwards reported that the fields and roads are in good condition and the fields are being utilized. Mr. Edwards discussed the plans for the current armory building after completion of the new building. The commission discussed the West Virginia Supreme Court of Appeals' decision concerning the contested election petition in response, David D. Taylor Petitioner v. Michael R. Kelly respondent, which upheld the county commission and the Circuit Court of Appeals' decision. The commission discussed board appointments needed or upcoming and will follow up at a future meeting. Judy Fado, Upshur County resident, appeared before the commission and expressed concerns regarding the possibility of flooding issues on her property in the future due to the construction of the armory. Ms. Fado's property is located next to the wellness complex and the future site of the new armory building. The commission advised Ms. Fado to check with the Army Corps of Engineers to address any questions she may have. On motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the commission entered into executive session at 10:10 a.m. to review and discuss applications and recommendations for the employment of an animal control officer. Present were Donnie Tanny, Creed Pletcher, J.C. Rafferty, William Parker, Megan J. Palmeri. No decisions were made in executive session. The commission returned to open session at 10:25 a.m. After discussion on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the employment of Patty Joe Gumm as full-time animal control officer as recommended by Greg Harris, Director of Facility Operations. Effective date of employment is November 13, 2012 at the rate of $9.00 per hour. The commission reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, agendas and/or notices of meetings as listed. Number two, meeting minutes and/or financial reports as listed. Number three, meetings as listed. Number four, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. The commission approved all invoices for payment. The commission approved all vacation orders. The commission approved the following settlements as listed. The commission approved the following exonerations and/or refunds as listed. The commission approved the following request to attend meetings for commission employees as listed. The commission reviewed property books for consideration in the establishment of Upshur County Appraisal Assessment Advisory Board. The commission postponed the 2:00 meeting with James Bryson Van Nostrand, Van Nostrand's architect concerning cost allocation for the E-911 project and will be rescheduling a future meeting. The commission recessed at 11:30 a.m. With no further business, on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the commission meeting adjourned at 11:30 a.m.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as read? Not an answer to a motion to be approved as such?
I'll make that one.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same side. Okay, our next scheduled appointment is 10:30 with Joe Leighton or Layton, Red Clay Development of West Virginia LLC, Upshur Townhouses L.B. Housing Project. And the next one is at 1:00, our Policy Board; 2:00, our Departmental Supervisors Meeting; and 3:30 at, with Bryson Van Nostrand. So we will go down through our other items, and the first is to approve Upshur County Financial Statement for fiscal year ending June 2012.
The Office of the County Clerk has prepared those. They had those prepared last week later during the meeting. The State Auditor's Office is actually the one that compiled the information. We contracted them to put that together. There's numerous copies. If the commission would like to look through those before they sign them today, later on today, you could take time later this morning to do that.
Well, it looks like we'll have time here between appointments, so we will do that. Next item is, "Provide payroll and related services for the Upshur County Family Resource Network," as requested for the employment of Amanda Hayes as part-time grant coordinator substance abuse prevention services, funding provided by West Virginia Department of Health and Human Resources for behavioral health and health facilities. Effective November 11, November, I guess that would be 11/8/12 at the rate of $10.00 an hour. Do we have a motion that we approve? This would just be a pass-through payroll?
I'd like some discussion, or at least to have an explanation as to the background and how the county is associated, or what our authority is or is not in connection with the appointment.
The Family Resource Network, Ms. Harris Thacker appeared a couple of meetings ago and went over the grant that they are receiving, they're administering, receiving the grant. It's being administered by, I think, the Harrison County Family Resource Network for a number of counties, of other family resource networks in other counties. The commission is really not involved in the grant at all. The only involvement we have is providing services, a payroll conduit to the Family Resource Network because they were not set up to do payroll. Similar to the situation, we handle the payroll for Ms. Harris Thacker on behalf of the Family Resource Network also. We really have no control, management, authority, or say anything in the operations of the Family Resource Network. It's a reimbursable situation, and that position, as well as this position, will be reimbursed. Also, the Family Resource Network will receive the grant funds and reimburse the county commission for any expenditures that we may have.
Similar to the Emergency Squad?
Similar to the Emergency Squad. We have other agencies that we provide this services for. The Emergency Squad, we only have one position. A number of years ago, that was the only paid position, and it was set up to go through the county commission for that reason. Now they have other paid staff, but that hasn't been moved for the emergency medical services over to them because of the long-time employee and benefits, retirement, and things that are associated with that, so.
Similar to what we also had with the Development Authority.
Development Authority.
Until this fiscal year.
Yes. And we still have one employee.
Right.
One employee of the Development Authority that we're doing that for. Similar to the Airport Authority.
Right.
Until July, then they moved to handling their own payroll. They employed the services of a bookkeeper accountant, so they're doing that now. So we've done this for other agencies and situations numerous times.
The only reason I raise the issue is because of Amanda's position with local newspaper, and she reports on county news, and I didn't know, you know, what, if that created a conflict of interest, quite frankly. I just wanted to make sure that that was not the case.
Yeah, there's no issues as it would relate to the county commission and the situation we have. It's just the service we're providing to the Family Resource Network.
Well, and I think anyone that knows how much Amanda donates her time to causes like that, that I think she's very aware of what's going on and has, like I say, volunteered a lot of time for a lot of those different type projects. I think she's a good fit for that position, and.
And I agree fully, because I attend the same church Amanda does, and she's very active in a number of activities, civic and otherwise. But I want to ensure that the public is aware, or that this is something that will not impact on her reporting in the commission, and that she will be objective in her reporting and whatnot of any activity that she covers that occurs here in the commission. I know that she will.
This is short-term and limited in scope.
Correct.
It's a short-term grant. I'm not exactly sure what the end date is. I think through the end of this fiscal year.
Right.
Time period. So we're looking at very few months in duration and very limited funding.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
I'll call for a motion.
Still moves. I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same side. Motion carries. All right, next item is, "Review State of Emergency Declaration. Consider Date for Cancellation." We have a recommendation from our OEM office as to how much longer we need to continue in the state of emergency.
I was not able to contact them. I prepared the agenda Monday due to the holiday, and Mr. Ferry has been out due to a personal situation with his family. So I don't know if this is something you want to consider later on today, discuss, or see if Mr. Farrell's available later today to ask. As you gentlemen are aware, the original declaration at the county level was just for a 48-hour period. That was renewed on the 31st and was declared until canceled by the county commission. So that's the situation we're in right now.
The governor's special, or enactment is still in effect?
Yes, as far as I know, it is still in effect.
Well, we still have a lot of people without power in Upshur County. I think we should probably keep that in effect until at least the people get their power back.
I believe we're still delivering meals to a certain portion, and that the Baptist Church on Wayside Baptist Church is still providing, and so is Chapel Hill. So I would concur with Creed that till we get a better handle on things, we hold this in abeyance.
Well, and as long as the state is in the state of emergency, I see no reason for us to change. Basically since, well, it has changed now. The last two days, Upshur County had the highest power outage, and I saw last night where one of the county stepped ahead of it. I forget what it was now. But we still have 3,500 to 4,000 people out of power. And, you know, one thing I think we need to do, whether through the Office of Emergency Services or what, but we see several staging areas around. I know up at the old, where the old garden phrase was for the older folks, and what was that? Shop and Save?
Right.
Most recent, the big parking lot? There must have been 50 or 60 trucks there, and I think they were from Ohio. When I crossed the street just a little while ago, there were about six or eight trucks that went on 20 North that were from Texas.
Yeah, tree-cutting services, I believe.
Right, well, they were a power company. But someone, someone was telling me that they stopped up at Tenerton, and they asked those folks where all they were working, and they said, "Well, they were there, waiting instructions as where to go." So I don't know if, and I know it's massive, and I know when you have that many folks coming into the area, but, you know, if they're sitting up there for an extended period of time because they don't know where to go, I think maybe we need to talk to the First Energy Mountain Power and see if there is a problem with coordination, because, and I'm not complaining, even though we had a gentleman out on, up on Bailey Ridge area that emailed, I think, all of us, and expressed his concern about how long the power had been out and how long, several issues. You know, some of them are, anyone that lives in the county knows, you're not going to get broadband. We don't have broadband in Tomlinsville. You know, our electric's been off since the beginning of the storm, and there's no sign of it being back on for some time. So, you know, I'm the same situation he is. He was talking about having satellite internet. Well, that's what I have to have in order to get any kind of speed. You know, there are certain areas that are always the last ones to get the electric back on, and he was concerned about the timeliness of getting the roads plowed, and I'm not sure if that's a county road, or state highway, or whether it's a private drive, but, and some of those issues are just simply the fact of where we live. You know, it's just like the folks that live up on Hemlock Ridge. They've wanted water for a number of years, and it's not economically feasible to get it. When it's $75,000 or $80,000 or $100,000 per customer, and there's so much grant money available, it's going to go to the projects that's $25,000. That's just a matter of math. I mean, there's only so much money. But I think if there are circumstances that we can, we can do something to at least talk to the folks in charge. I think that's part of our responsibility as leaders of the county. If there's a situation like that where we can inject some thought and ask some questions that maybe will get, you know, things faster, and I know with the same token, when you have that many different companies coming in, you're helping, that it takes a while to get everybody out in the field in the proper place to work. But I think they need to be made aware of that, and it certainly, you know, adds to the frustration of people when they see 40 or 50 trucks sitting in an area for an extended period of time and they're out of electricity. So I think we need to, whether it's through the Office of Emergency Management or the commission, that we need to at least make contact and see if there are some issues there that can be resolved.
There was also some miscommunication. Someone said that they were staying at the 4H camp in Selbyville. Those workers from Ohio, they were actually staying at Jackson's Mill. And one gentleman at the Doris story the other night said he hoped they could hurry up and restore the power because he'd like to go home, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, Donnie, I'd just add to that. I still dabble in the red cross. I've been possessed for quite a while. They were staying, some of those trucks were the nor'easter on the east coast, so they weren't just, well, here they had them on standby against for Washington and all that that late storm that went through and jumped 23 inches from one height to the other.
Well, and those are some good, those are some answers that we could get by asking those questions, and in that way we can relay that information to the folks in the area. I mean, there's certain value to living in the beautiful hills of West Virginia, but when storms come through, there's certain consequences.
I think many times, as we found during the summer incident, the storm came through, it is communication, communicating between the various elements involved in restoring the power or government. It's just a matter of communication. But I think overall, we've much improved from the summer's activity with regard to coordinating relief in many ways, so. But we will, and I'll get back to that gentleman. I did send an email reply to him that I would inquire about that and get back to him, which I will do later today.
Approval of community proclamation, that's something that we will be dealing with and talking about in executive session. It's not because it's any kind of a subversive thing to the community, it's just that there's someone that's going to be honored, and they want to be able to announce it at a later date and have the proclamation in place, so it's a good thing. It's just something that they want to surprise the individual before all these years of service, so that's what that's all about. And of course, review of the property tax books, that's something that stays on there till we get through all these other crises. Then we have confirmed action taken on Sunday, November 4th, in the relocation of Precinct 4, which is Arlington Community Building to go to Rock Cave Elementary School, Precinct 25 out in French Creek Elementary School to go to the Armory, Precinct 27A, French Creek Elementary to go to the Armory, and 27L, French Creek Elementary School to go to the National Guard Armory. So we need to take official action to confirm those decisions that was made in that situation.
I'll make a motion. If necessary.
Okay. I'll second. Any questions on that? All in favor, say aye. Oh, same side? Motion carries.
It appears we made the right decision.
Yeah, because they still don't have, still don't have, there's no school there today.
For once, you made the right decision.
Yeah. Well.
Oh, it can't be controversial. I have to call.
Not to evoke an old farmer's saying, but, you know, they say even a blind hawk can find a naper every once in a while.
That's right.
And not that you made everybody happy in that decision.
Well, even though, yeah, right. And that's understandable.
I always liked the one, "No good deed, got no punishment."
Right.
That's also applicable.
Well, you know, you make decisions based on, we looked at a lot of different options. You know, there was the option of bringing tents in, but then there were a lot of issues of safety and room and that type of thing, so, you know, we had the armory locked in, fortunately beforehand, in anticipation of that and others. Fortunately, all the others got their power on except Arlington, and so. And we had, what was their voter turnout?
56.07, I believe.
Who won the poll? Megan?
I did.
You graduated, this is the first timer.
Fifty, or 59.
Fifty-nine.
Another, I believe that evokes another.
Yeah, 59.07.
Another saying of beginner's luck.
Yes. Two years ago, I made the right choice.
Well, see, beginner's luck.
Yeah.
So, buddy, I guess you're next. And what was our, did we get a percentage of early voting? What was that? Was that like 20?
Like 25 percent.
Yeah, 3,172.
Like a 25 percent, almost a quarter, I think.
14,100.
So about half voted early. 25 percent. Well, no, what was it? The turnout?
59.07.
Okay, and what was the total number of voters?
14,000.
Eighty thousand or something.
Or was it 14?
14,000. Well, it's interesting, and I don't know if, I don't know if they, if they have a method of determining.
About 8,300 total.
What was it?
About 8,300.
8,300.
In round numbers.
Okay, so what percentage voted early?
Almost 40 percent, 35 percent.
About 38 percent.
38 percent voted early.
Of the voters.
But here's the interesting thing, and I don't know if anyone's done a study, done a study on that since early voting has been enacted. The purpose of early voting is to get more people to vote, and the question is, does it get more people to vote, or does it get those who would vote anyway just to come early? Is it, only if anyone's done a study on that or made a determination of if it's effective in getting more people to vote, or does it just get people given the convenience to vote conveniently?
I suspect that somewhere in this great land, there's a political science professor who's applied for a grant to study this.
Yeah.
To find out.
The bean counters are in the back room somewhere running the numbers.
Yeah, we have somebody on track.
I think early voting is the way to go. I think we should do early voting and not have an election, it saves us a lot of money.
Right. I think we should do like Oregon. It should be mail-in ballot for everyone. They had the highest 60-some percent turnout, so, anyway. Okay, moving right along, that's the items we have on our agenda. We have some information on our building permits. We've got between $700,000 and $800,000 in building permits for $724,000.
I wonder if that will increase as a result of a storm?
I just wonder if some of these are, yeah, I would say we'll probably have some new metal buildings built and some roofs repaired. Okay, that seems to be what we have. Do you gentlemen have anything else? Willie?
Well, we have some paperwork and the proclamation to review in the executive session.
How are we doing on our appointments?
Well, did we have the time to go over those this week and determine what we have and if we, people want to continue to serve, or?
Still have a month to go before there are vacant, many of the cases.
Do we have any that's vacant now, other than there's a Currie, I believe, but since they're not going to meet in February, that's not really that critical.
Parks and Recreation Board, there's a vacancy through June of 2013, and then there's two appointments, Mr. Failey and Ms. Reed at the county make that expired on June 30th.
Of '12?
Yes. The Board of Education, I've, we've tried to make contact. I don't know if Alicia, I know has contacted them, and I don't know what that situation is there.
Are those two board appointments?
Mr. Failey and Ms. Reed are county appointments.
Counties.
And then.
Individual. I have an individual appointee relative to a vacancy on the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Yes.
Which I think he's also spoken with you, Willie.
Yes.
Regarding that, so you can move on that one at some convenient time in the near future.
And my knowledge—I'm still trying to verify what the Soul Conservation District on their appointment to the Solid Waste Authority.
Many of these, I think, on the planning—reassessing planning and ill and consolation, I suspect will accept a continuation of their initial appointment.
They usually do.
Yeah, they're very interested in the community development.
Basis of the chairman. Okay, well, we'll continue to work on those and we'll talk—I know, I think Felicia's out sick, but we'll continue to pursue that and try to get that at least before Creed leaves. I know that's the goal, yes.
It makes me a little bit happier.
Yeah, that's right.
I would like to consider that what you do, Willie, you might want to consider still serving on the board in some capacity on various boards that you're on, because you contributed to the community at that point.
I'm not going to quit. Salvation Army is glad to see me. I'll have more time literacy volunteers.
Okay, well, let's—we have a motion to enter into executive session per West Virginia Code 698-4 for discussion of proclamation.
So moved.
I'll second.
Both say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries. Okay, we are exiting executive session and entering regular session, and there was action taken as per West Virginia Code 698-4 under this particular exemption—exception, so. And that decision will be made knowing publicly at a later date. Okay, so that takes care of until 10:30, which is about 25 minutes, and we will start on our paperwork between now and then.